Mr. Dymo.
Mr. Dymo, here.
Very welcome.
Here.
Ms. Anakin.
Here.
Mr. Mulder.
Here.
Mr. Kelly, here.
First on the agenda is Mr. Demoff for an investigation report. Present.
Good evening, everybody. I don't know how much I'll need this, maybe not much at all. If you can't hear me in the back, please put your hand up and I'll try and use the microphone a little bit better. Appreciate you all being here. Appreciate especially concerned citizens for being here because the council's had a chance to review the report. And I pride myself in making sure that when I do these investigations, and they're not easy to do, they're sensitive, there's personality conflicts involved, there's politics involved, there's all sorts of statements being made by various people, from administration, from leaders to the workers. We've interviewed both past and current workers. We've had a lot of workers, employees from the past and present, come to us in confidence, very concerned about not being revealed who they are, being very worried about their jobs, about retaliation unfortunately. So I do have to respect the confidentiality, but I do have to be clear in the fact that we did talk to numerous employees, both from past and current. Majority of them would not submit their names to be put in the public record. Some did, and we'll talk about that. A little bit about my background, most of the people here in the council and the mayor already know my background, but I think it's important that I establish what my background is because I think your background dictates the credibility of your report. I'm a former law enforcement with the city of Akron, also worked on the federal task force. Some of the highlights of my career, a lot of different things I served in, I did a lot of major investigations, I have a lot of experience in that area. I'm proud to say that the state of Ohio Attorney General, one year, awarded me Police Officer of the Year. The reason I mention it's not for an ego purpose, but only one officer in the entire state of Ohio gets that award per year. And I think if you're an officer and you get that kind of an award, I think I can look you in the eye and say, what I tell you tonight, I can guarantee you is the truth. Amongst all this other stuff, which is personality conflicts and politics, I'm here to tell you the truth. I'm also, I'm not here to tell you what you want to hear, I'm here to tell you what you need to hear. I'm here to tell the truth. The reason I've pushed for this public opportunity is because I want everybody to know the truth. I want everybody to know, I want to be able to look everybody in the face and say, look, we did a thorough job. Additionally, besides being Police Officer of the Year, I was International Narcotic Officer of the Year, awarded in Montreal, Canada. I worked extensively in narcotics investigations. I can go on for different things. After my police career, I developed this company, which developed human resource. And I want to emphasize that I am an HR, human resource expert. I'm a nationally recognized court HR expert. I am a nationally recognized court, security, law enforcement, and investigation expert. So, I can speak about human resource violations as well, and along with security violations, which involves this, which Scott has been accused of, which another previous investigation has been done by Attorney Wertz out of a law firm, good law firm, and she is a legal HR expert. The only thing that, there are certain things that disturb me about this case, and there's certain things, you know, that don't disturb me, and I'm going to share those. Right off the bat, Law Director Joe Deemer's report of investigation was posted on the website. Attorney Wertz's investigation report was posted on the website for you, the general public, to review, to make your own determination. Just the past two days, my report was rejected, not allowed to be put on the website by your law department, Joe Deemer. And I'll say publicly that I think that my report should be on there. And you make your own determination, what you want to believe or what you don't want to believe, but I think when you put two other reports on there and you don't allow this report to be on there in preparation for this, I find that, for lack of a better description, another red flag of, are we looking for the truth or what? Let me just clarify, I'm not a resident of this city. I don't work here, I have contracts here, and I don't know anybody before I took this case on. I've given no contributions to any political party or any person up here. I've already been accused of being a political pawn, a political assassin, and all these other, you know, nice trademarks that people want to invent when they're upset with the truth. But I want to stress to you, I have no connections to this community. I'll have no connections when I leave. The only connection I have is, I've been, I've been told to come here and do an objective investigation, that's exactly what I did. Now, this investigation is not perfect. This investigation doesn't answer all the questions. And I'm going to also tell you that this got so complicated, my company went over the budget that we were given by eight thousand dollars, and I'm not looking for that money back. I need to publicly say that. I have not, nor would accept it. The reason I went over, and the reason my team went over is we wanted to finish this report, and I didn't want to leave people hanging with the facts that we found, okay? Next, it's been rumored that Sylvia paid me to be her pawn. That's not true. Three council people joined together to pay the fee that I was given with the expectation that they would get their reimbursement. I don't know if that reimbursement's going to happen, it's not up to me, it's up to council. But I want to make it clear, there's no political connection, there's no political lying, and I'm not interested in that. So, I really wanted to clarify my background, I wanted to clarify who I am, and I wanted to make sure everybody knew, you know, I did not have any of those kinds of ties to this. What's my motivation? First motivation was to review accusations against Scott Sop, the finance director, to see whether I felt there's any validity into it. The other thing is, to find out why those accusations came in place, who was responsible for them, what, is there something? Usually when there's something criminal going on, or something ethical going on, or conflict of interest, especially in these kinds of settings, you have to really look at the motivation behind those accusations. It's only fair to do that. You can't just say somebody did something wrong. You've got to know why they did something wrong, that doesn't make it right. Or you have to understand if they're being accused by certain people, and if those people have credibility. That caused us to go beyond the accusations of Scott, into an accusation or examination, into who and what's behind it, and is that valid? And we did that. So, we went through, and the investigation did go over, and we did look at the council, everyone on the council, their connections, okay? We looked at the law director, Joe Deemer, we looked at Mr. Ladd, we looked at Mr. Diggatano, we looked at employees, we looked at different people. I talked to your previous HR director, well, let me back up, your previous two HR directors, and your previous service director, Mr. Greve Art. So, I made sure that I talked to previous management and got an understanding of what happened, because as we worked through this, we found out that this thing with Scott and with others, it's not something just recently happened. You have a problem in this city, and it's been ongoing for years. I'm going to explain to you what we discovered. Citizens are the ones that can demand correcting it. Politicians will pay politics the whole time, citizens will demand to have done what's right. That's why I'm so adamant about being here, talking to you tonight, and I appreciate you taking the time to be here. Now, this case grew extensively in scope due to the crucial key information being provided to me by other known and unknown employees, known and unknown former management, statements by your leadership, the mayor, and the other directors, okay? And it expanded considerably, basically out of things that we discovered, which I'll share with you, and, and I want to. Now, the next thing that happened is, I'm going to tell you something, when I first started this investigation, and I hope I don't offend Mr. Scott Sop here, but when I first took this investigation, I thought potentially that Scott had, had done several things probably not correctly. From the preliminary information I was given, I want to be honest, my prejudice, my little first reaction was, this guy probably did some of the things that they said. How many I didn't know, but that's the type of information I was provided, that's how it was structured. That's human nature to have a first feeling. But I also tell myself, you never know for sure, you know, and you owe it to yourself, Mr. Sop, to the people of the city, to find out for sure. Not guess, not have a gut feeling, but to find out. And that's what I did. Now, the first thing is, when you've got all these accusations going back, you're going to check the credibility of those accused in which you get into, and you're also want to check the credibility of the person. When I started finding out that Mr. Sop here, in the last three years, got a twenty thousand dollar raise, that tells me somebody thought he did a good job, and it had to be more than one person. Then I go back into your paperwork, and I find a newsletter from the city of Macedonia, personally written by the mayor, praising him up and down, saying that he is an agent of this city, he is an archangel guarding your money, doing a fantastic job. Several months later, he's accused of things. Now, can that happen? Yeah, but I'm just telling you, what we start discovering is all of a sudden, like a flip of a switch, you go from a great employee to a terrible employee that should be terminated. I don't know about you, that's a red flag to me. Really, what's the story? Once again, we wanted to find out what that story was. Next thing I said is, I'm going to quit guessing. I'm going to put that man on a polygraph. I put him on one polygraph, I put him on seven, eight, or nine polygraphs. And I had each polygraph individually done so we could focus exclusively on that question, specifically on one question. I don't want to get into the details of the polygraph, but the polygraph operator and the way the polygraph is done is crucial. We only asked him to be asked a certain question at each polygraph session, so that we would not lead or confuse one question with another, and even remotely give him the opportunity to deceptively try to beat that polygraph. So, we took the extent of giving him polygraphs to dig in on each question. I have been accused by people here tonight that I manipulated the questions to what I wanted the results to be. I want you to know right now, I did not have any input into any question on the polygraph, and in fact, I refused to have input, and the polygraph operator demanded that they create the polygraph question. Not only did I not have any input into the polygraph, we used the exact verbiage of the accusations from the law department, and the mayor, and others, that was put to us in writing from them, we gave that to the polygraph operator, and that's where the questions were derived from, from the exact wording accusations from your leadership in this, this community. So that tells you I had nothing to do with it, and obviously, the outcome is a direct result of accusations made by certain people. You cannot get a more objective, fair, detailed polygraph, and you're not going to fool a polygraph when it's done correctly. But I want to emphasize that because in writing, I've been attacked, that I manipulated him, I did not. Questions came from the accusations, and I'm very, very adamant about that. Next thing is, on my report at the beginning, it tells you a summary of my conclusion, a summary conclusion. I've been accused in the paper of making a determination before I did the investigation, and they're making that statement based on the fact that I did a summary at the beginning of my investigative report, so therefore, I must have thought the outcome before I did the investigation. I almost feel like I'm being ridiculous up here, but I just want you to know, just because I put a summary at the beginning, it's just the format of my report. It is not, it is not concurring that I had any thought. I don't come into this with a thought. I come into this with finding the truth. And I'll dig, and I'm good at digging. And I dug up a lot of stuff people don't want to talk about, admit to, or even begin to approach. But I'm telling you, I'm going to leave here tonight, I'll leave all this council and everybody with this information, you're going to have to make your own determination, because I'm leaving you with plenty. If they want to investigate further with someone else, that's fine, there's a whole bunch more there to investigate. I've investigated plenty enough that you can make a decision, and the council can make a decision. Anyway, we started investigating Scott, we started looking at his accusations, we did start to find personality conflict, okay? Now, I'm going to say something. Mr. Scott Sop is not perfect, okay? He's not perfect. Thank you, ma'am, nobody is perfect. Everybody in this room is not perfect. This leadership is not perfect. But I draw a line to where you want to go after someone and terminate them versus they did something that is worthy of termination, okay? And, and I think that's what we were set out, that we needed to do. We looked at Scott's accusations, and we hit a wall. Here's the wall I hit. Joe Deemer, law director, does an investigation, him and his staff, or whoever, is allowed to interview employees during the day while they're working. Attorney Wertz comes, fine lady, good lady, good law firm, she is allowed to investigate and interview employees while they're working. Tim Demoff, he comes with his team, he requests not allowed to interview employees during work hours. Two investigations are allowed, one isn't. Once again, you can argue all you want, that's not right. And I will tell you, the only thing you do is delay this investigation another two, three weeks, because if you think you're not going to let me interview employees during the day, it's going to stop you. You should leave now, because that ain't going to happen. We had to work a little harder, dig a little better, make some phone calls at home, chase people down, yeah, it's a hassle. But my question is, why are we throwing all these obstacles? What does that tell me, what does that tell you? Is someone trying to prevent the truth? And I know they'll have a rebuttal that, oh, you expanded your investigation. So we expanded our investigation? Is that a mortal sin to expand your investigation to find the truth? I'm not going to argue about it, but I just think you need to know. We were worried about information being withheld. First six weeks of our investigation, no employee would speak to us. No former employee would speak to us. Not until we started to discover things that were going on in the past, then the employees came forward and said, now we believe you're not working for them, now we believe that you're objective, now we believe that you're going to be fair. So we had to earn, and that's okay, that's normal. In the end of the report, I state there's things we didn't have time or money to investigate. Is there more stuff that could be investigated? Yes, there is. Does it need to be? It's not my determination. I think there's enough here to make some intelligent decision. And, look, whether it's conflict of interest, ethical, or criminal behavior, or just you want your city to run proper again, this council needs to get together and make some decisions, and they need to put the political stuff to the side. We're getting strong, strong political resistance based on, on just politics, and I think the council needs to say, hey, let's forget that, let's make intelligent human decisions here, let's get the leadership, you know, revamped, replaced, or whatever they decide that they should do. Let's talk about Scott. He voluntarily subject himself to several polygraphs, as I've said to you, they were formulated, okay? I want you to know, in those questions, we made sure, and the polygraph operator made sure words like deliberately and intentionally were in there. Mr. Sop, did you intentionally delay purchase orders? Did you deliberately delay purchase orders? Because that's what the accusations are, that he went out of his way deliberately and intentionally. That's the kind of an example of what was used. Secondly, I want you to know, there was no financial loss at all. We found no financial loss at all because of his action, okay? That has to be a consideration. You doing a good job or a bad job? Hey, if you're losing us a couple hundred thousand dollars, you're doing a bad job. But guess what we found out? They're mad about insurance, they're mad about bids, they're mad about this. Your finance director saved you a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a contract over three years. He got another small bid on another contract, and he saved you another fifteen thousand dollars. But we want to turn around for the same action, we're not completing an action, and we want to terminate him. So I got to look at, is there a financial loss? The answer was no, there was a financial gain by his employment. And at the same time, they were rewarding him up to the point of a disagreement. So what really stimulated this thing? Here's the bottom line to stimulate it. Council passes a resolution that Joe Deemer will no longer be paid the way he's been paid in the past. His law firm is a subcontractor. His billings, that I personally looked at, had listings for billings to the citizens of this city and to the council, such as, I'm charging you for review of legislation. Anybody here want to tell me what review of legislation is, how much time you spend on it, what legislation, when, where, how, and who would want to be billed on that? So council was concerned about the billing, about the verbiage, about how they were getting billed, how much money they were losing. They pass a resolution that says, look, we want more details, we want more responsibility on the billings. We want you more accountable, law, law director, law, acting law director, law firm for the city. Does council have the right, and should they be asking? Yeah. Now, up to that point, I'm not crazy about how he did his billing, I don't think it's criminal. Is it, in my book, a little bit vague, maybe unethical? You can probably argue that, but it doesn't matter. When council passed that resolution, it changed. Mr. Deemer goes to Scott and says, hey, and Scott says, they just passed a new legislation, there's no money in that account to pay you. And Mr. Deemer was very upset about it. He wanted to be paid anyway. So now you have a law director asking and demanding a finance director to pay money in a fund that doesn't exist. That is an ethical violation, he would be personally liable and criminally liable for that order, that demand. He stood up to him and said, no, okay? At that point, I started thinking, do we have somebody here that wants to listen and go by the way they should? That's a clue, maybe? Okay, so Mr. Deemer's upset he didn't get paid, I understand that, but you can't demand the finance director to pay. Then Mr. Deemer says, well, if you're not going to pay my law firm, pay me personally with it. He said, sign a 1099, and you also have to do a waiver for the retirement fund. Mr. Deemer refused to sign it, so he can't be paid through a 1099. He demands to be paid personally again. Another, what do you want to call it, order, demand, request? It's unethical. Since when does a law director dictate how he gets paid in a controversy of a new legislation? It's at that point we started to suspect that there's something else going on. I'm not up here trying to be an attorney, I'm up here giving you the facts. You determine what you think those facts are. I can tell you, everybody in the state of Ohio will have a different opinion. Is it ethical, is it conflict of interest, is it criminal? I'm not sure, but I can tell you this is one of them. Something's going on, but those are mine. That is what started the accusations against Scott. That's what got everybody on board to all of a sudden come up with other details of things that he did or didn't do. We had an ODNR, Ohio Department of Natural Resources, there were some fishing poles to Canal Fulton. Yes, Scott works at the council of Canal Fulton, he also works here as finance director. He arranged for kids to get fishing poles there or here, he got for here at Macedonia, there was extra money, extra stuff, so he got Canal Fulton's money, and they wanted the extra fishing poles and this and that, and then, all of a sudden, an issue came up about Ohio Department of Natural Resources, and then Scott, he went to a young lady in the office and told her to backdate the, the purchase order, and I'm here to tell you, we don't really know whether that purchase order, he told, I would take her word for it, that she probably did, but Scott talked to someone at ODNR who told him it was okay to do it, that's his story. The other side of the story is that that never happened. Only problem is, the Ohio Department of Natural Resources said, grow up. The kids got the fishing poles, nobody stole the money, the money got paid for the fishing poles, find something else to argue about, and we want nothing to do with your guys' stupid arguments. So because ODNR doesn't want to get involved, doesn't want to take a stance, you have no victim. So what did I do? I disregarded that charge against them. What else could I do? If you aren't a victim and you aren't willing to prosecute, we cannot go forward in a court of law, even in a personal accusation. So, throw the ODNR thing out the window, and once again, I'll emphasize, they don't want to be involved, we don't know if they really backdated it, and we know he told her to backdate it, but ODNR doesn't want to take a stance, they don't want no interviews. Why? But the bottom line is, no money stolen, kids got their fishing poles. Are we making a big deal out of nothing? Probably, you know, but I do have to tell you the truth on that one. Now, several accusations, lack of registering certain amenities, we'll talk about it, incident confusion about registering business who are doing work for the city. We have, let's see, guidelines and different things that weren't followed. We had a painter come in that wasn't registered. And I'm going to talk about all these individually really quick, because I'm not going to just keep digging in on all this, but, with Scott, let's just get to the meat and potatoes. Polygraph one, Scott passed a polygraph that stated he never deliberately failed to register a painting contractor. He never deliberately failed, okay? Did he not register the painting contractor? Answer to that is yes, he did fail to register the painting contractor. But guess what? The mayor asked the painting contractor to do some painting in this facility. Mr. Ladd asked the same painter to do some painting in the facility. They didn't register him. Well, I got a statement that said you did. Okay, well, I got a statement that said you did. So, I'm not going to deal in, in, Mr. Ladd, you're more than welcome, you know, and I understand, but I'm just telling you, that's the statement. I know that several people from the city took this painter around, in his statement, his testimony, and he said, nobody, including Scott, didn't ask me to register. Now, we went further on this, and you know how we found out, in defense of Mr. Ladd, in defense of Scott, in defense of a lot of people. There's confusion on when you're supposed to register somebody that works here for the city and when you're not. You also have a twenty, twenty-five thousand dollar bid limit, if it's under it, you're supposedly not have to maybe take bids, and there's confusion on whether you're registered with the city and you work for the citizens as a retail or commercial and you have to be registered, versus if you do work for the city of Macedonia, whether you have to be registered. All I'm telling you is, there's confusion on that, Scott's confused, Mr. Ladd's probably confused, I think others are confused, because we had no consistency of anybody registering anybody. And we, the painter is just one example. We asked Scott if he deliberately slowed down purchase orders. He passed a polygraph affirming that he did not deliberately slow down purchase orders as he was accused. Now, his excuse was there wasn't money in those funds, and when there ain't money in those funds, he can't authorize the purchase order. Guess what we found? We found that to be true. We also found- We also found there's a practice here in certain departments. They go ahead and get checks written ahead of allocated funds. And it's a common practice. So where do you draw the line? If I like you, it's okay? You don't have money in your fund? If I don't like you, it's not okay? Or if I get mad at you, all of a sudden the standards change? I'm just letting you know, it's confusion. I have a hard time sorting it out and I don't know how they sorted it out. And that's all the department heads. I think I'm defending them all about the registration and the bid process. Scott never intentionally delayed reimbursement of State Route eighty-two project. He affirmed and passed that polygraph. The other problem is, the mayor put him on administrative leave before that project was finished. So he had no ability to finish that up or his appropriated funds. He was accused of calling an employee stupid. Scott admits that he said the word stupid out loud. It was not in reference to her. It was in reference to the process they were using. Long story short, they were trying to use a typewriter to clean up the process, trying to figure out a new way. It didn't work. Scott was frustrated and yelled out, "This is stupid." That employee thought he was talking to her. He says he wasn't. She said he was. Give him a polygraph. He passed it. Polygraph says he was not referring to her as stupid. I don't know any other way to solve that one. To be honest with you, I don't even know why that's on the list to terminate somebody. We all get frustrated at times. He never stated within the finance department he preferred younger and older person. When I hear these accusations, I'm sorry, but I think we're majoring in minors. And at a point in time, I thought, you know, some of this stuff. He affirmed and passed that he never said that. Then we have some serious things where Scott's son was up to be hired. Mr. Dicatano stated that Scott stated, quote unquote, "Bad things would come down the pipe if his son was not hired." That's what Mr. Dicatano said that he said. The polygraph question specifically asked him if he said that statement or anything near it. He affirmed it. He passed. I will tell you, Mr. Dicatano and Scott don't get along. They have personality conflicts. They don't like each other. They argue all the time. We have statements from employees that said Mr. Dicatano and Scott would yell at each other at the top of their lungs, both of them, at different times. And people would shut doors and have to get off phones. Okay? It's a heated personality conflict. I don't know where you draw the line on it. Both of them arguing, both of them yelling. Once again, I said Scott's not perfect, nor is anybody else. There was a guy named Mullenbeck who Scott referred to to the city. He had a new paving program. And he was accused of trying to get Mullenbeck hired. We interviewed Mullenbeck. He said, "Absolutely. I don't want to be hired by the city. Don't need to. I have my own business. I had a new paving project." That is the only thing we talked about. We put him on the box. We asked him, "Did you, Scott, did you do anything other than refer Mullenbeck to Ladd?" He's here. Scott passed that polygraph and said, "Yes, he sent him to Ladd. Did not try to influence him to be hired." Mullenbeck says, "I didn't even want to be hired. I never told Scott I wanted to be hired. I didn't even consider it." So there's some confusion there. Once again, these are just ongoing things. Rieger Painting, by the way, saved the city five thousand dollars. This is something they want to fire Scott for. You know, where do you draw the line? You save someone money and you're supposed to be terminated for it? Maybe Rieger was supposed to be registered, I guess, before the job. But once again, there were three other people that used Rieger, suggested he do jobs. None of them registered, including Scott. The use of this to file insurance saved the city a hundred and fifty thousand dollars over three years. Scott, whoever, was supposed to get bids. We had liability insurance records for the city. Scott was accused of having the responsibility for that. The only thing, we found the records for that accusation rested in the service department. So I, I don't know. Records are in the service department, but Scott's responsible for it. He should be terminated because he didn't follow up on the records that are not in his department. Time clock. Scott was supposed to be potentially terminated because he put a time clock into one location out of three. Improper bidding, improper registration, whatever. Here's the only problem. I won't go into detail, but prior to the time clocks being put in, you had two other management. Two other management committing potential time violations, such as double dipping, not being at work, clocking in when you're not there, having someone else, whatever. Two other management. So Scott was told, "We need to find time clocks because we need to keep tabs on our management." He gets a pilot test at one location and he gets accused of not getting bid. It was a pilot test program for three sites. It was under your threshold anyway, your twenty, twenty-five thousand, whatever it is. It was a pilot test. A tree fund account was missing. A tree fund helps beautify your city. Scott got accused of hiding, using, or doing something with the tree fund money. Until Sherri Kuzma took everybody on a little field trip to Mr. Dicatano's office and found it in the bottom drawer of his office. All I'm going to say to you is, where's this nonsense at? You want to terminate somebody for missing funds that's not even in your department, in someone else's drawer? And you know what? After you find that fund and you find that you're wrong about the accusations against anybody, they continue to want to accuse him of wrongdoing on a tree fund. So you've got to understand where I'm coming from on the outside. You correct the problem and you don't say, "I'm sorry, we're wrong. It's in the bottom drawer of the other department." We talked about purchase orders. I won't go there. We talked about accusations against employees. I'm not going to reiterate all this. Denise Malahal, former HR director. She notices Mr. Ladd here is missing from work. And she notices that he comes in at certain times way beyond when he's supposed to be there allegedly. She then takes her lunch breaks, doesn't do it on this time, does it on her own time at lunch, and goes up to Cog Heights and finds his vehicle parked there when he's supposed to be working for the city. I'll take that any way you want. There was supposed to be an investigation. It wasn't done very thorough because they allowed him to go back to Cog Heights and change his time card. That is unbelievable to me. Unbelievable. But it depends on who likes you, who you're tight with.
We have a problem with that.
Yeah, I did that investigation.
Thank you.
And what happened?
I can show that to anyone.
We'll discuss it when I can have the investigation.
Vince, Vince, let the lies continue. We've got it all down here.
And Mr. Deemer and everybody can, you know, tape me, quote me and all that. I'm just telling you, this is what we were provided. This is not an accusation against you. It's an accusation that he was allowed to change his time machine. Nothing, not thorough was the problem I had.
I apologize for that.
I just, I scratched my head. I tell you, I'm going to tell you right now, everything I'm saying up here, everything, is human nature, cannot be positively, exactly, true, to the point, whatever. But there's too much that I'm telling you that all of it can't be false. I'm trying to show a trend. We're even having a hard time getting a handle on that trend, on different things that were allowed, not allowed, accusations proving after and continuing to go. So I want you to take in it. If a thorough investigation was done on it, sorry, I couldn't find any information on it and I would love to have more. And that's okay. That's why we're here. I'm here to expose the stuff and you can come forward. Mr. Deemer can come forward, Mr. Ladd and the police. But I'm going to tell you right now, you're not going to disprove everything I'm telling you. That's not going to happen. This is too entrenched. Anyway, so she identifies the fact that she thinks Mr. Ladd's double dipping. Okay, we'll leave that go. Her reward is, they move her office because they need to bring some file cabinets up from the basement. They need her office to put those file cabinets in and move her down the hall. How convenient, being right after that accusation. You know, so you have to ask yourself, "How are we managing people? You know, is that ethically correct? Is that proper?" State auditor cleared Scott of any criminal wrongdoing. Prosecutor Marcus Scott made it clear none of the allegations were of any type of criminal, you know? And we talked about some of the other things. Scott's son was supposed to be hired, I mean, could have been hired. There was controversy there. I won't get into that. But the bottom line is, once again, this started with some personality conflict between Joe Deemer and Scott. What happened is, we had a lot of employees come forward after we started exposing some of this and a lot of current and past employees and past management, basically stating that a lot of intimidation is going on. A lot of politics, a lot of intimidation and a lot of retaliation if you speak up. And if I heard it once or twice, I would tell you, as a disgruntled employee. But when you hear it numerous times from numerous current and past employees, you have to at least make note of the fact that it's potentially possible. And I am clarifying that I am not accusing all your leadership in this city of being part of that. I'm not. Right before Dicatano left, a gentleman by the name of Jason Ritchie was, who's on probation. He got promoted to tradesman, which gave him more money for that promotion. A lot of employees were upset because they were told numerous times, "You can't get tradesman promotion when you're on probation. You have to be here for a couple of years." So there was some unsettling rest. And these are just examples of different things that popped up. Unfortunately, before Mr. Dicatano retired, he held a meeting. And at that meeting, he explained to his employees how they can borrow equipment from the city of Macedonia and use it on the weekends and take it home. He also explained to them how they could go to the service department, pull their personal cars in there and go ahead and work on it. Now, Mr. Dicatano or anybody else is going to say, "We made that up. The employee made that up." Only problem is, that employee taped recorded that conversation. We get into different things with Mr. Deemer and that and as a law director. I'm sure he does some fine things. But at different times, you have to be very careful when you're in the law department and law director. He knows that. There were some questions, ethical questions and conflict of interest. I'm not going to get into too much detail. My report outlines quite a bit. But there seem to have been, unfortunately, your mayor had, has a serious debt issue, financial, and that caused some, I'm sure, some issues for him selling his gas station and different things. He borrowed money. Mr. Kuchar lent him some money. Mr. Kuchar, in an interview, told me directly to Mr. Deemer, personally asked Mr. Kuchar to forgive the mayor of the hundred and thirty thousand dollar debt. Mr. Deemer claims he didn't make that statement. All I can tell you is, we interviewed Mr. Kuchar. He said he absolutely, directly asked me to forgive that debt. The only reason I bring it up is if it's true. That's an extreme amount of conflict interest. Your law director cannot represent people personally and also legally. There had been other employees that come forward with information stating that kind of thing happened several times. Potentially, as I said before, if we kept investigating, those would be some of the things that we would, we would look at or someone else would look at. And I'm sure Mr. Deemer would dispute it. He already has. But once again, I have a statement on that. Different other things happened, which I'll get into here and I'll stop. I know there's lots of people want to ask questions and defend stuff. As far as Mr. Deemer goes, once again, this thing's starting with personality conflict with Scott, starting when Councilwoman Hannigan changed the billing process and that kind of caused some confusion and some hardships and some people being upset. Mr. Deemer, obviously, pressured Scott, demanded to be paid when there was no money there. It's at least improper to do that. We talked about the forgiving of the loan. We won't go over that again and different things. The mayor ran into, because of his debt, into problems and pressures to pay bills. I can understand that. He got notified of garnishment to come out of his pay. That garnishment was from the port. And it was started by Mr. Kuchar, who was tired and upset that he didn't pay him back. So he went the legal route. The demand from the court came to the mayor. The mayor had a couple of weeks to appeal it. He basically put it in his drawer and stayed there for a couple of weeks. Then later on, it came out and he handed it to Scott, asked Scott what he should do. Scott says, "The timeframe's up from my understanding on the appeal. We need to start immediately garnishing your wages." I think he handed it to his lady in the office and she started the process of garnishing. Here's the problem. By the mayor inadvertently, intentionally, not intentionally, losing, misplacing, placing, whatever, that letter for a couple of weeks, it caused the city of Macedonia to get another court accusation. And Mr. Deemer, because it came after the city for not garnishing, for taking the money out of Mayor Kuchar's, Kuchar's pay, because that letter was hidden for a while and there wasn't a garnishment, the city got pulled into, to a legal action. Because the city got made, Mr. Deemer, as the law director, had to defend the city, which I don't dispute. He does have to defend the city on anything. The problem is, after he's done defending it, why did he not ask the mayor to reimburse the fees that were spent to defend that action that started out as a personal legal thing by the mayor? It was not a legal city of Macedonia legal action. Therefore, the law director should have emphatically demanded to be reimbursed for the city. Once again, call it what you want, improper, ethical, whatever, conflict of interest. I don't know. Whatever you want to call it, but it's improper. It should have been a direct demand for reimbursement when it's a personal thing. You can have your opinion on that. I'm sure others do too. So that kind of caused a little tidal wave there. We'll jump to the mayors. I told you, the mayor unfortunately had a lot of debt, a lot of financial issues, which really caused a lot of pressure, unfortunately. First thing, which is no secret, is this snowplowing. The mayor of... The mayor obtained free snow plow and free garbage removal. Remember I talked about credibility at the beginning? You tell me the credibility of this, I'll give it to you objectively. Mayor's accused of improperly using your snow plow. He does not qualify under the amount of money for the snow plow. It's for senior citizens that makes X amount of money or have X amount of income. He's way above that threshold. He may even be close to double, but whatever. He's nowhere near it. I see four times in the audience. Someone says four times. But it doesn't matter. He doesn't qualify. Here's where my credibility issue comes in. First time he's accused of doing it, excuse is, "It was an accident. Didn't mean to happen. Didn't understand, whatever." Okay. It goes further, and he says, "Oh, no. My wife accidentally signed this up for it. She didn't understand the guidelines." Only problem is, his wife's signature is not on the sheet for the senior citizen's snow plow and trash pickup. That's two strikes of credibility. Then, just recently, he stated that he's the service director, and the service director has to make sure the citizens are safe and the snow is removed from your streets. And he has to get out late at night, and it's only proper that his driveway be cleared. I will tell you that the senior citizen's snow plow cleaning doesn't take place at night. It takes place during the middle of the day. That's the third excuse. That didn't work, so now, the latest one to be published is when he broke his ankle, they did it as a courtesy. Now, you can pick any one of the four you want. But that's misappropriation of public funds. That's improper use of public funds. And technically, it could be construed, and I'm not recommending, it could be construed as theft in office. We have a similar case in Medina where the misuse of appropriate funds was used. That person was convicted criminally on that. My point is, who am I to believe when I give four excuses for the same question? And I know it's probably a result of pressure and different things, but everybody, you know, has pressure. And that's the kind of encountering we're finding out there. Always an excuse. When excuse doesn't work, we'll try another one. Deny, try another one. And that's the constant that we ran into.